You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
To order? What time is it? We're not. All right. We all set, Kai? Great, thank you. All right, madam town administrator, you want to tell us why we're here?
We are here to discuss the IP needs. Yeah.
Want to take it from the top?
Yes.
I've scheduled a meeting for Monday that I now think I should cancel. We're still missing a lot of departmental budget. I don't know how many people have reached out to FIRE and I know you did recently. I haven't heard a word.
So I spoke with Chief yesterday and he said he submitted it.
He submitted it last week. I don't have it.
So...
And pivotal to a lot of things. Can he go another year with the FIRE engine? Right out there. If he can. Something will come of it. And you can figure that out in meetings. Yeah. But your stat of other ones, I still have a bunch of DPW things. Dams, rivers.
Yes, I thought that's what we were here today to kind of talk about, see where we're at, because I'm new here.
And dams, I know are a big deal.
Swansea Lake Dam is going to be substantial, but we know what the engineering, I think the engineering quotes are all, I mean, they arrange, it's arranged, because they don't know what they're going to get into when they start doing hydro studies. But it's arranged from seventy-five to one hundred fifty just for the engineering. The work that's going to be done is going to be determined by what they find in their hydro studies, so it's pretty difficult. This is for Weber Hill, right?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, that's for Weber Hill.
We wouldn't get them.
Yeah, get them.
Let's do the dams. Do you need the seventy-five?
To one hundred fifty, that's going to be needed right away. Seventy-five to one fifty just for engineering, for the studies and the design.
And that's for dams?
For Swansea. For Lake Dam, all the other ones are in pretty good shape right now. And the downside to Swansea Lake Dam being a low hazard dam, they don't offer grants for, they usually don't offer grants. Engineering, the engineering company would start looking to see if, kick the rocks to see if there's anything, but the Upper Wilson Pond Dam was a high hazard dam, so there were quite a bit of funds available for that. But it doesn't look like grants is going to be an option.
Okay. So this seventy-five to one hundred, that would be for?
Design, engineering services and design.
And out of that would come an estimate, or can you give us an estimate prior to that?
Can't, because you don't know what you're going to find. The big thing is once they get into the hydro studies and start learning more what they're going to need to do, and then they can give us a more accurate number, because without doing that, they don't know.
Sure.
And that comes with the range of the engineering. So if we get in there and they find that they don't have to do a lot, it's not going to be as much, but I know it's a broad range, but all of them were pretty close in that seventy-five to one fifty range.
But that doesn't include the hydro study.
That includes every, of this engineering services, yeah. That seventy-five to one fifty will give you a design and the overseeing of building that design, but it doesn't pay for anything that needs to be done.
Thanks, sorry.
Yeah, no, no. And it shouldn't be, Swansea Lake Dam should not be nearly as substantial as these other ones. No.
Well, we did work on it, what, five years ago?
It wasn't that long.
Yeah. Was it just before you came in, I think?
Yeah, it was before I came in.
But we need to fix the boat landing too when we do this.
Yeah, part of that.
That's got to be fixed.
Yeah, I got to complain on that today. Guy thinks I can do it.
A lot of people have screwed up on that stupid thing.
Okay. But bridges, we have no more Thompson Bridge issues that negative.
No, we have some alarm needs that the select board are going to discuss next Wednesday, so we don't have.
Some what?
Alarm.
Fire alarm.
Yeah.
We're going to go into that next week. Fire alarm on the bridge.
We'll talk about that in non-public too a little bit. Wastewater, I'll jump to that, because I gave you nothing on wastewater, because I don't know, there's a planning study going on right now. The West Swansea Water Treatment Plant is going to need, one of two things is going to have to happen within the next five years. Is tie-in to Keene and shut down the wastewater plant, turn it into a pump station, or it's going to need millions in upgrades to meet EPA requirements.
It's adding the lagoon out of the picture right now? It's adding another lagoon out of the picture?
It's not the capacity of the lagoon, it's the plant's ability to meet the requirements of the different levels.
Yep.
Any chance those levels are going to change?
For the worse, they keep telling me don't, it's going to go the other way. And the engineers that are working on the planning studies say that our current permit, some of the levels they have are very unrealistic to meet. Not a good situation there.
We've got all sorts of good news.
What do you mean, we've got nothing to talk on, the roads are all in good shape. I got bridges.
All right, there are three projects that we need to get from an understanding of how much is being spent and how much is there. Weber Hill, which was originally the cause.
What's the cause of the traffic control?
All sorts of alarms have been going off, because there's not enough money there. I went back and CIPC put in one point seven five million for it, which Joe tells me is about two hundred fifty greater than what he needs.
No, we found that we're paying for the traffic control, so just recently learned that. So here's your budget sheet, year to date.
I meant to make copies, I can run up if you need me to.
So that's, that's traffic control that we have paid out.
How much can that be?
Hundred sixty-three to eighty-eight for nine months, yeah?
Yep.
Hundred sixty-three thousand?
Well, we're still in good shape if that is still covered.
Yeah, yeah. But that's the most recent budget sheet.
So did we find out what the reason was why everybody was walking around in panic for several months?
Yes, the reason was that test borings weren't done, the engineer didn't do test borings on the bottom of the project, and it created a substantial change in engineering and now.
I'm aware of all that, and that's why we changed it at the last minute last year, and we scrambled around and put plenty of money in, but then later this year, I was told that we were under, or way over budget and we had to fill the gap.
So we may have to fill in a little gap, because when Michael came over that Saturday to help me with the budget stuff, we went through all of the expenditures, what's been dispersed. And we found there was a shortage of, I think it was like three hundred and something dollars, but then we went back.
Three hundred dollars?
Three hundred thousand, sorry, and went back and tried to find it, because we ended up finding a memo, I think I came back in the next week and just searching for stuff, and we found a memo that he had did to the board. Saying that there was an increase, that there was a, what do you call it, change order to it, but we couldn't find it in the minutes anywhere authorizing the board to make that change. So technically, you obviously discussed it last year, it just never made it into the minutes. So I think what we need to do to just make it right is have it in the minutes, have the board make a motion, and we have the funds in the road.
First of all, this is part of the roads budget. The roads budget is specific in CIPC, but it is not limiting as to how the board can spend the money. The only problem you have is if the road rehab budget is less than what you spent. In this case, it clearly is not. So the board does not have a problem, the way I see it.
No, we just need.
Even if you're over budget.
We just need a motion, yeah, we just need the paper trail.
So this is telling me you've spent one point seven three five mil and you have another one hundred and thirty-seven K.
Yep, I don't have it in front of me, but yeah.
Or Joe's saying one hundred sixty-three K now? Or is it a hundred and thirty, thirty-six plus a hundred and sixty-three?
One sixty-three is the cost.
Yeah, the one sixty, yeah, the one sixty-three is not included on this, on this budget sheet, because they went, went direct through the town with flagging instead of the.
So then Lori's correct, we're three hundred thousand, like.
So what does that mean? Because we have the funding, is it just we didn't allocate it? Do we need to allocate that? Is that what you're declaring?
It's sitting in the roads fund. I'm going to have to analyze the old roads fund to come up with an answer, but the roads fund is starting off with a balance of about a million dollars. And from Joe's budget that he gave me, there's a surplus in there.
Because of the changes on West Street, but we're hoping to start on Marcy Hill earlier than planned, if that surplus is available.
So the answer is we'll work through it.
Yeah.
Now that we have a number, and I thank you greatly for that, and you'll come out one way or the other. The other two open items that I'd love to see this sort of thing on, such as you can at this point, are FIRE and North Winchester, California.
I have, the engineers are the ones who draft this, because they're managing the grants and everything, so I can get you on the North Winchester and California street.
Yeah, North Winchester is substantially done, is it not?
No, it's, well, North Win, it's all part of the same project, but that phase of it is, they still need to finish the sidewalks, landscape, and then top code it, but all the infrastructures in the ground, they have a little bit more sidewalk to do. Landscaping, and then, and then finish, finish paving. California Street currently, they're working on drainage, hoping to have pavement done by the end of the month, base coat pavement. Goal would be to have it completely done sometime in end of October, beginning of November.
When do the plants shut down this year?
Weather-wise, Thanksgiving usually, but we won't, if, if there's any delay, we won't talk, when it gets cold, we'll do it in the spring. But if all goes well, it should be buttoned up by November first. If California Street goes like North Winchester Street did, it's not going to be an issue.
And the same with fire protection. Have we heard about the, what I've always called the Shaheen Grant? Any update on it?
I don't have any update, but I do know that we are being awarded, I think it was two hundred and, two hundred thousand. So we have that confirmation from the USDA, yes. And you asked for the FIRE, I think Katie or Bob just sent over a statement that I forwarded to you, but I'll forward it on to you, Steve, so you can have it similar to that.
On the architect.
Okay. As to other things, and we can get into this in a private session, it would be really helpful if we could get all the requisitions done and in and through the trustees of trust funds by September thirtieth. Now, I know there are tons of conflicts with finance, but we would have a clean break then, and if we start off with a bad balance, we can do all the work in the face of the earth, and we're going to end up with a bad balance and have perfect information in between. So a good cutoff, and the only cutoff that I'm sure of, sure of staking, putting a fine seal on is the trustee of trust funds balances, simply because I have some input with that and access to it. There will still be some funds which the board has committed to, which have not been spent or are, or paid for yet. So, but if we could get to that rock thing, rock solid number by September thirtieth, which means the check issued in the trustee's bank, we would have a much better cutoff, and it wouldn't be garbage in, garbage out.
Any reason why we can't do that?
I don't see any reason why.
I can imagine.
So do, are there funds available that we could, we could request that the trustees are holding?
Absolutely. The processes, the town pays for these things, and then Teresa requisitions the trustees for it. There has been in the past two years as much as a two-year lag in that. I mean, a two-year lag is.
A two-year lag in?
Requisitioning the trustees.
So asking for a check from the trustees, two years?
In twenty twenty-four, we were paying twenty twenty-two bills. Or we were reimbursing the town for twenty twenty-two charges. Yeah, it's, wow. And it's somewhat better, but it's still lagging, and it gives the town a better balance here, checks and balances.
Definitely, yep.
So that would be high on my list. I'm not sure how you're tracking fire station bond proceeds. I know there was that four hundred thousand drawn down, and that hasn't come back to the trustees. I don't really care if it does.
The five hundred thousand or four hundred?
Four hundred.
How much was it?
Five hundred.
Five hundred?
Yeah.
Excuse me. It can come back to the trustees or the town can hold it.
I don't think we can give it back to the trustees.
We're going to spend it anyway.
Well, with the Shaheen Grant, someone should be monitoring that.
We're going to come in, the Shaheen Grant will put us almost right on budget, so we're only going to need a little bit more. With, with the capital reserve, the bond, and the Shaheen Grant will come pretty close to the total.
I did a schedule of that at one point, which means you will not draw down on any other funds?
Not significantly. We, what we're, DPW has done a great job, as you know, with doing a lot of the site work and some of the material swapping, so we, we won't know until we get that. Evened out with Gordon to determine what that value was versus what they're bid on.
Yeah, because there's still stuff in there that, so we're working with them on a daily basis recently, and that's all going to be deducted, and then stuff like, they still carry the paving, which is a big one, forty or fifty thousand right there alone, that they're going to relinquish that, and all states will pave it for us under our road contract price at a substantial savings.
And we saved eighty-five thousand with the work they did with regard to, Gordon did with regard to the lighting and, and the windows.
Yes.
So there's a hundred and fifty thousand that we've been able to save. And there's a lot more work that you would want to be credited for.
The contract price is what, two?
Two six and change.
Two six and change, and so I think it's reasonable to get that into the I two five.
Well, we're already there.
Yeah.
And then, and then when your, your work is balanced out, we'll look closer to two five.
So the contract price was after the eighty thousand was pulled out of the contract?
Oh, a bit, yeah.
Reason why the two sixes, the concrete went up from what the preliminary was.
Okay, that brings us to Town Hall. I met with Katie, went over the plans briefly with her, talked about it, and told her that we weren't going to do a bond. And we were looking at piecemealing it and perhaps building just the stairwell and the elevator shaft and whatever is connected to that. She gave me her latest plans. She made a number of statements, we can go over them or not, I don't really want to get more involved than just being a messenger and bring them. She said the good working number for cost, which struck me as high, was three hundred and fifty thousand.
For the staircase and the luau?
Yeah.
For, wait, just the staircase?
And the luau.
And the luau, and hooking it up to Town Hall. It could be done outside of Town Hall, which won't interrupt you, and it would do no further work down here. At least give us access to this room, which is a benefit, and storage space. We then, once you settle out and what you want, we can do it either by capital reserve or a bond deal. I'd love to do it by capital reserve and doing as much of it by ourselves as possible. The big ticket items, the shaft going down.
But this is all doing it on the outside?
Yeah. She made a number of other comments. She said, you've got to look at mechanicals down here, there are apparently new code items about air exchange. And whatever we do, we should consult with a mechanical engineer about that, because it could be a big ticket item. You'll see in this, there are all sorts of elaborate offices and whatnot, but I don't think are going to happen. You will also see a restroom. We talked a great deal about that, or that took up more time than anything else. She said we can probably, although it's not certain, get around it if we have enough toilets upstairs and there's a code minimum of. if we have enough toilets upstairs and there's a code minimum of people to toilets.
Now, there is a bathroom down here, though.
It's a step up, it's three or four steps up, it's over in that corner.
So, which we could continue to use, right?
I don't see one, uh, it's not ADA, but.
Cause my initial, the only reason I ask is like, my initial first thought was to get the rec department, at least a temporary office, put, take two, two offices from that original plan and put them in the middle and just.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm just trying to get the big thing done.
Right.
She also recommended that we talk to the concrete guy who did the fire station, who she said came way under everybody else and he does wonderful work.
Is that Hackel?
Yeah.
I don't see.
I don't see too.
Need for either a general contractor or for that matter, an architect. I think there's enough savvy in this town with the right guidance from the right concrete guy. But I'm not a construction person, I'm a bean counter.
Is the elevator shaft plan in here?
Yes, it is.
Can I ask a question?
And a formal set of bathrooms is, and she said the bathrooms are several hundred thousand dollars, because they go under the other bathrooms and the excavation is a nightmare. And she said if you can avoid those bathrooms, please do.
I just wonder with the issues that we have with the ventilation up there now.
Yeah.
That's so far above my head, I can't.
But I think all the problems stem from the trucks being here with the ventilation thing, with the exhaust, that was the big problem. You know? My question was, is it, is it to use downstairs, we have to have an elevator downstairs here? What is the reason behind having stairs and elevator down here versus using this as a two-story building with two entrances? What, what is the reason behind all this?
It's a good question, it's a good question, it's, yeah.
I don't, I don't understand why we have to have an elevator and a stairs when we could have a, a, another.
Separate entrance.
A separate entrance downstairs is here and upstairs is there.
That's how Ranger Town Hall is.
Why are we so on to spending this much money on an elevator and stairs?
We got those stairs.
Why? On to spending this much money on an elevator and stairs?
We got those stairs.
Why?
Why?
Yeah.
Just from the standpoint that, uh, Lori brought up, do, do you want me to go up and, and print? So she'd be able to run up the stairs, get the printer, otherwise she gotta run outside, inclement weather and all that. So you, you also, from the standpoint of egress, I, we'd have to look at that, but stairs for sure.
Well, Erica's Adam is a toad.
I, I don't doubt it.
And, and, and CIPC's wrestled with that for years, and everybody and their brother has said it's a toad.
Yep.
And frankly, sitting here, you can see it.
Yeah.
And the new staircase would go on right about there.
But elevator.
Even for, I think, means of egress, right? If you had a meeting in here with X amount of people, even right now, there's only one, one way out.
Yeah, but like I said, stairs, stairs versus three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an elevator, a set of stairs, three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars will build you a pretty decent building somewhere.
That's right.
So.
I don't think there's any disagreement.
Yeah, but.
Really is the question, at least I think, with whether it's a lula or not.
What's a lula?
Lula is a, is what we have at Wickham Hall.
How old is that?
Was a light, light use, limited access, something like that.
Elevator, but, but why do we?
It's not an elevator.
Yeah.
Cause it doesn't have the mechanism that an elevator requires.
Do you need that or just a set of stairs?
That's the question.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's also, that, that's.
I understand the thinking is all the files would come down here.
Yeah, right through the, we could bring them right in through those garage doors.
Well.
Or a slot.
Or a dumbwaiter.
Yeah.
No, it's just a question, I think you brought it up, if there's parking right here, it's ADA parking, there wouldn't necessarily be a need for the lula.
Yeah.
Well, there's ADA.
As long as we haven't had an ADA bathroom down here, right? There is that.
So we'd have to have an ADA bathroom.
You make a, I don't know, I have to look at, you make a ramp going into that one, but, uh.
I don't think you got this, the, it's, it's almost six by six now that's required.
What if we raise the floor to that level?
Did you see how high that floor is?
No, I didn't see that. But if you come out.
It's four steps.
Uh, but if you come, you'd lose some space, but if you come out on that outside wall.
You get where it.
Ram to a landing.
What's that? But, uh, I'm, what I'm getting at, Bill, is the size of the bathroom itself.
Bathroom's too small.
It, it might be.
Maybe I'll change that too, but, but like I said, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a set of steps and an elevator.
Well, there's a lot of room for a bathroom there, and you can even make a ramp to the bathroom.
Right. Or you just have a pump-up system.
Well, it, I understand the pipes are higher than the floor, so you'd have to have some sort of something.
Yeah. Yeah, those are, those are readily available, a lot cheaper than, I mean, the, actually, a lula's not that expensive, but.
But.
But it, it's seventy-five or eighty, so.
Uh, yeah, cause I bet you guess.
I, it's, it's just over a hundred, she said.
For a lula?
Yeah. I, I, I.
Till then, the shaft, I mean, I bet you it is.
Installed.
Was there any discussion about running a staircase just along that wall? And whether that would be less expensive than building an outside staircase that has to be enclosed?
Wouldn't work off our plan.
Yeah, cause that's what I was thinking.
Well, it would go by windows then and whatnot, I don't know whether that bothers you.
No. No, the other would be able to come down, put a landing and then turn back. But I, Stefan told me landings now have to be four by four.
Yeah.
So, but it could be done here.
Yeah, you could come, you could even come down.
Yep.
That could be something as simple as having a contractor look at it.
It's gotta be, just between those two items, we'll save a hundred.
Yeah, cause I can't sense.
Going outside.
Well, yeah.
And we're, we're gonna do the eleva- oh, no, cause I'm the only one. The original design of Wick, oh, you were here, Wickham Hall was to have the elevator on the outside, remember? And it's all, with a lula, which was half the, half the expense. And save parking.
Well, file transfer is a real thing, and wheeling around out front is probably not an answer. So you, you gotta at least analyze that, I think. Uh, beyond that, it's not CIPC's world to get into design.
Have you seen this guy with a dolly? How's the guy?
I'll roll a box down here, since it's three hundred and fifty thousand. I'll roll every box down here that you want.
The, the goal is can, can we get to a capital reserve number?
Yeah.
That can get.
Would, would she give you for the overall?
She was, she really didn't. She said, we'll plan on for the rest of it, two hundred bucks a square foot, and I said, yeah.
Well, that's a couple of million.
We don't need it. I think there's a practical way of doing this.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Um, and as long as Lori gets what she wants and we get the space, I'm happy.
Make sure you negotiate well this time, young lady.
I'm not even gonna say that I'm, I'm not even gonna say that I'm very content right now, so.
But you, uh, get the gold trip.
Well, we'll need a number, say by November first.
We haven't even finished the design of this. But we're not a hundred percent.
Those are all tentative and dated.
Yeah.
So, and overkill, I, I felt. Uh, I've got a bit of drawings of the first floor that are no longer accurate.
I wonder if they were done before we had the roof done? I have no idea, do you remember?
I think they were.
Okay, so they're showing barren walls that we don't have anymore. So, cause that's, I think you told me, this is all wide open now upstairs. There's really, other than the fixed items like the, the vault that Town Clerk has, we've got.
Well, the goal's free standing.
That's right, yeah.
Break down into the foundation.
We don't, we don't have any bearing walls.
Yeah. Okay. So you're gonna have to do a raza up there.
Steve, what was your number that Katie gave, three hundred and fifty thousand for the staircase and the bathroom?
Oh, elevator.
No, that was, that was. That's just the shaft, Lori.
That's doing the outside, doing it from the outside as opposed to inside.
And, and if we do do a shaft, I don't think it has to be a work of art.
If, if we'd have to do a lula, it could be just like Wickham Hall. And actually, Wickham Hall has three floors, this is only a floor, one floor, two floors.
Well, the lula only goes two floors, right?
Didn't they put something down, I have never been at the news, but I thought they put something down.
It's only two buttons in there, one and two, it's only three buttons.
There's an up and down and you have to hold the up.
That's why my granddaughter got locked in there.
And hold the down.
God. But if we're just, the big need of that is.
It makes a god- awful noise.
The, the big need is file transfer, be look at maybe a dumbwaiter for that type of stuff.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah, and I, I can't imagine doing a set of, we, and if Lori's goal is to have a couple of offices started down here and a set of stairs, we could work with a contractor to get a placeholder for CIP, whatever it costs. Um, and I can't imagine it'd be that much to get a set of stairs down here.
But as a practical matter, if you wanna clean out all your files upstairs and reclaim the space, you're gonna have to some access that someone.
Right.
Not quite as strong as Joe, cause you got the wheel things around.
Yeah, maybe we could have all the files from Pine Street over here eventually, too, that would be helpful.
I thought they were gonna.
I thought we were gonna build a building up with those.
We build a DBW building, we can put a, um, dry storage in there that everybody could have access to.
Well, one thing we're gonna do is build a DBW building.
Mm-hmm.
So, hopefully.
But in the meantime, why can't Lori have what she wants in the office down here and we use them just like we have it now? You can't use that for the rec right now, like when we moved them out, why couldn't we build an office down here? But basically you want.
We may not even be able to build, we may not even have to build something, we could.
We're gonna do a bathroom.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if he wanted to do the staircase.
Is that your main concern, like to have some office space for the rec center and stuff? And we could get by what he has, cause my personal opinion, I think his problem is bigger than this problem.
Oh, by far.
Yeah, this isn't.
This is nano.
The, the priority is deep, is DPW.
Yeah.
I'd like to get Town Hall on its way.
I understand.
So we don't lose, right now, a year and a half.
I gotcha.
And, and fif- fif- fifty percent's a lot easier than.
Yeah, if you can afford some now and makes sense.
And, and I am, I know that the fire department was uneasy about people using this room for code reasons. So I, I'm pretty sure you gotta put in access and egress for code.
Why don't we look at getting a placeholder for stairs, upgrading the bathroom if it's possible to make it ADA compliant?
And one office sometimes.
We gotta do an air exchange.
Yeah.
And maybe a dumbwaiter or something, I. And I don't care if the stairs are hanging from ceilings as long as we have it. I'm gonna try and do, do, design it, I just got this because I felt it was the starting point.
It's a good starting point.
Um, and that about covers it. Uh, but I need some more, and I gave you a list of the CIP open, um, items. And we have all the wonderful ones like the library and the range.
You need, um.
Should we talk about those now? Cause I feel more comfortable having you guys here to help with these decisions, seeing that I'm.
Well, I need the forms filled out.
Well, if I have, I can fill the forms out if I have a number to put in there.
It's a quick question for you before we move on, when do you, would you need placeholders for Town Hall or CIP?
I, I just said.
November.
November first.
I don't, I'm like, as far as.
I, I can, I can reach out to a few contractors.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at the stage.
When is the budget here, in January?
Third week of January.
December first?
December first, I, is reasonable, but yeah, November first.
That'll be the latest CIPC's ever been, but that's fine.
Yeah, I could get something together by December.
I mean, we're not trying to honor CIP's schedule, we're trying to move the town forward.
I've got a, in the next eight weeks, I need to get a lot of stuff done, which is gonna require me to beat out in the field a bit more. Um, and then, then still dealing with some other stuff, putting it together, so.
You mean the fire station, a major road project, is it enough work?
Uh, railroad, uh, sidebar project, which is coming to an end.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Sidebar project, West Street reconstruction, North Winchester, California Street, the fire station, and a sewer plant that's, that's failing.
I'm trying to find the email.
Yeah, the.
Ones that he needs.
The sewer plant's a bigger deal.
Oh. And we've had personnel issues that, that, we're heading in the right direction, but right now we don't have until October first. We don't have a primary operator, he starts October first, so.
Who's licensed?
Who's licensed, yes, um, ready to go, but we're, uh, because of not having an operator, we're having, we're gonna be in violation of a few things, cause we don't have an operator, but they.
They're working the list.
Yeah.
The state's working the list.
Yeah.
I'm gonna cancel Monday's meeting and see if we can get some stuff in there and maybe set it up for two weeks. Uh, some of these items are so large, we just gotta get them right.
So you have the fire one, it just didn't get to Steve, or you?
I didn't have the fire one, but, um, Chief told me on, I think it was Monday, I asked him about it and he said he submitted it.
He was last week.
Everybody has it, but Lori and myself. I don't know where it is.
We'll get that over today, or tomorrow.
That's okay.
Um, did you have all the other department heads, don't you? Cause Ashley said she submitted hers and.
Yeah.
Josh and Rec Joe and the other Joe.
Recreation, recycling, police.
You got most of them.
We don't have emergency management.
He's, he's coming along with that, he's gonna make a presentation to us next week.
I'm pretty sure we just went based on what was in there last year, which was ten thousand or eleven thousand.
But I need bridges and sidewalk.
That's what was projected for twenty twenty-six.
Or I can just make up numbers.
I think he, he's gotta, he's gotta have a conversation with the fire chief to determine what spaces.
You and I should talk, um.
We can do that at home.
Yeah, or you and I can lead it, but I, yeah.
At the fire station. Or whether he needs.
I don't know what their wishes are with sidewalks, um.
Who, who would prefer that it was the fire station.
The one I just did on Railroad Street was, uh, was driven by the sidewalk committee.
We've hit up the sidewalk fund pretty substantially. Yeah, and when we get requisitions in, it's not only the capital reserves and the expendable trust, but it's the other funds like the sidewalk fund. And I will lay in some extra funds. Um, we're opening up an account this year for Carpenter Home, because you wanna start doing stuff for it. But there's substantial funds in the common trust funds that the trustees hold that can do a roof for you. And I gather that's a priority.
It'd be nice to do it this year.
Carpenter Home, we have to do this year.
Yeah.
But you said there's a couple of funds, NEDI, uh, one of the, a NEDI something.
NEDI is for the Swansea Lake Pavilion.
Specific to that area, I thought we can't use it.
And we're changing that, I hope, to blow out the whole fund. It only has like.
Seven thousand, but we were hoping we could use that for the Carpenter Home.
No.
Are there any funds available that we can pull off of? That's gonna be about a fourteen or fifteen thousand dollar job.
There's between thirty and forty thousand there.
Okay.
Expendable now.
All right, so we can move on a roof, move on.
You can move on a roof.
Okay, I'll move on a roof.
And not hurt the budget.
Just the front part, right?
Yeah.
Shingles.
Yeah. Yeah.
At least we got some moved forward.
Too steep for our guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's got a good pitch to it.
That's about all I have.
Too high up, yeah, we'll, we'll push them too far.
Uh, I'm, I'm trying to go through my mind, I have rental trails.
You, you as one of those guys roll up.
I do not have the Conservation Land Trust, which I assume will be zero. So let's not ask for it, because they might ask for something. Um, I shouldn't say that. Um, Conservation. Both libraries are in. Um, although I. Um, although I have two com- completely different ones for for Mount Caesar. Um, I'll work through that. I think that's about it.
Okay, so.
And 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 Town IMS.
Oh, technology, yeah.
And any other Town Hall projects other than the one we're talking about.
Okay. Um, and then we had dams and bridges, are those still, did we cover those today?
No, we gotta wait till next week after meeting with the select board, have some discussions about that.
Okay.
But there are no more bridge horror stories I have.
No horrors.
No, there's not.
No, yeah. Well, what other bridges that we have other than the covered bridge in Thompson, where else will we? Yeah, no, no, the Demmon Thompson Bridge is, that's no horror stories like that.
Carlton, the slate bridge.
Yeah.
Carlton's being decked now.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
And then the slate bridge to redact that.
You, I think Steve was just referring to the Demmon Thompson Bridge and the concrete just falling apart.
That blew all sorts of budgets, but there was nothing even being done. Um. Do we have anything else?
Katie had some documents for you to sign.
Yes, more, it's for the water and sewer bills to be sent out.
Okay, is that something we need to have a motion on or we just, we just sign it?
No.
Is there anything else for the meeting?
I think we're, I think we covered it.
Well, I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your, anybody else?
Did you need it on non pub, Steve? Did you wanna discuss some things in non pub?
No, I I think we covered all of those privately. Um, you know, my feelings about it, I think we just have it and Joe feels the same way.
So anyway, before we get into that, is there any need to run to non public on that? All right, we're we're all set?
Take the motion and close the meeting?
Yeah, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're all set?
Aye.
Thank you.